The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Hi, and welcome to I on Oshkosh. No, I'm not Cheryl Hens or Melanie Bleckel. This is Tony Palmieri from the Department of Communication at UW Oshkosh. I am hosting the show tonight because Melanie is on hiatus, taking a little break from the show, and we are talking about city council candidates today. And Cheryl Hens is a candidate for city council, and so she will not be hosting shows that deal with that topic. But I am very happy to be joined as a co-host by Ben Schneider II. You know him from the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education. He too is running for reelection this year, but we will not be discussing school board issues on this show. Uh, Ben, thanks so much for being here as co-host.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it very much. We will have three candidates on our show today. In our first 15 minutes, we'll be joined by Bob Peschel. In our second 15-minute segment, we'll be joined by council candidate Mike Domke. And in our third 15-minute segment, we'll have Andrew Corwitz. And then in the final 15 minutes of the show, Ben and I will have a general discussion of city issues. So let's start with council candidate Bob Peschel. And I do have to announce, to make sure that all potential conflicts are on the table. I have been working with Bob on his campaign, so let's get that out on the table originally. Bob, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Ben.
Why are you running for the city council?
I am running for city council because I'm born and raised in Oshkosh. I've lived through what Oshkosh has offered our community. And I see that there's time, it's time for a positive change in the Oshkosh community. And I think that I can bring a loud voice to that, to that change in the city.
Okay. We're going to ask you a series of questions that you can answer yes or no, and then you can kind of expand on your answers if you want to. As you know, lots of money has been spent on the Riverside Park Amphitheater. Do you support the use of taxpayer dollars for the amphitheater project?
I do not support the use of taxpayer dollars on the amphitheater project.
How come?
Reason being is that I feel that we, that the city of Oshkosh, meaning the taxpayers of Oshkosh, are at a point where it's tough economic times for them right now. And I believe that in tough economic times, we should be putting more dollars into creating and sustaining social programs of uplift in the city of Oshkosh instead of putting into more extra projects for the city. Which I, and I have to say, I'm not against the amphitheater at all, but I'm totally against tax dollars going into this. I think things like the Pollock Pool, pool that I used to go to when I was a kid, should have remained open before we have put millions of dollars, or a million or so dollars, into this project.
So you don't think the pool should be closed?
I don't think the pool should be closed at all. I think we, I think we should work to find the money to, to keep the pool, to reopen the pool, renovate the pool, um, build a new pool if we need to. Um, but I think that a pool is one of those social necessities that builds a great amount of welfare for the children of our city.
Ben, do you want to step in at this point?
Well, how would we pay for the, you know, the funding of that pool?
Well, I mean, we, we put a million dollars into, into the amphitheater so far of taxpayer dollars. And taxpayer dollars are there to, to use for infrastructure, and for programs, and for areas of which our, of which we as taxpayers have put forth our money to build our city around. Um, I think that there's probably a good chance that a million dollars would have totally renovated that pool, and probably with some money left over. So I mean, right there is, is a great, is a great, is a, is an answer to that.
So would you go to the taxpayers at this point and say, "We need a tax increase for that pool"? Is that, would that be a good reason to raise taxes for the pool?
I think that, I mean, well, right now, it's a tough predicament because we've already spent the million dollars on, on this amphitheater. So, and for me, I think that, I, I think that that is worthy of spending tax dollars on, because it's something that we should sustain. And it's something that has brought so much greatness to our community over, I don't know, I think it's been around for, for over 20 years, over my whole, my whole life that I know of. And it's something that we know has worked, and it's something that we should keep on sustaining to make sure it works. That's something with the amphitheaters that we don't have any of that worked out yet. We don't have promotions worked out, we don't have concessions worked out. All we have is that we're going to build an amphitheater with tax dollars and with a lot of great incentives from, from the local community.
We did, actually, the common council waived the competitive bidding process to give CR Meyer the contract for arguably it was restrooms and concession stands. Had you been on the council, would you have voted to waive that bid?
I would not have voted to waive that bid.
Okay. Why?
I think that no bidding process is discriminatory and unfair. Um, I believe that as, as city officials, we have to, we have to keep, we have to live up to the equal opportunity laws, that we, you know, wish that our equal opportunity, that we wish our businesses and our schools hire people by and employ people by. And I believe by waiving that, we're usurping what we've built our community on, laws. And so I'm totally against that.
Okay. Ben?
Well, so this short few minutes, we've talked a lot about taxes. The city raised their tax, the tax rate on the, you know, we got our tax bill in December, 5.7%. Do you think that's a reasonable tax increase?
I don't think it's a reasonable tax increase. I, I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's a very high tax increase. I mean, especially at, right now, when, I mean, we're, you know, I'm still new in this process, but I believe that in the economic times that we're in, we should work out a plan of action that stabilizes taxes. Um, and so that, so that, I mean, how many, how many jobs have we lost in Oshkosh? We know of in the last, in the last year, at least 250 jobs. Um, and that's probably was really hard times for a lot, for 250 workers, most likely have mortgages on their house, who are probably most likely struggling to pay their taxes right now.
So would you have supported that 5.7%? Would you have supported that levy?
No.
What is a reasonable levy?
Um, I would, I would say that the levy would have to be much lower.
Well, maybe another way of asking that question is, what would you cut?
What would I cut?
Right. If we're gonna, if we're gonna have a zero tax increase or 1%, probably more has to be cut out of the city budget. And I know you've been looking at the city budget. Is there anything in there that sticks out to you that needs to be cut?
Um, well, I, I believe that there's, there's areas that, for me, when I, when I view the city budget, there's, there's areas of miscellaneous, areas in our budget that are, there's, there's, there's one area that's $500,000 of miscellaneous. If that's not good enough for, for our, for our city council to say, "This is what this stuff is for," and, and, you know, putting it, you know, putting it aside because we may have to use this later, and we don't know what's going to come up. I think if we, we already have, our city councillors and our city planners have a good idea of what's planned out for the year ahead of us. And they should be willing to do that. And I think that if they're not willing to do that, we should be able to be more honest with the taxpayers and say, "We're going to cut from this and put it this way, and put it in other areas so we don't have to raise those taxes."
Different topic. Smoking in restaurants, been a very divisive issue in the city. Do you support a ban on smoking in restaurants?
I, I believe that I do support a ban.
Okay.
Um, in, in restaurants. Partly because I, I feel, well, actually, let me, let me rephrase that. I believe that, that, that the way things stand now is that it's an unconstitutional referendum.
Okay.
Um, I believe it has to be yes or no.
Alright.
And I don't think that we should have restaurants, have restaurants and some, or have restaurants that have bars, not be able to have it. The 70/30, I find it unconstitutional.
I want to, I want to shoot a bunch of yes or no questions out because we have four minutes left in your segment. Do you think that the mayor should have veto power?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Federal Signal, as you know, Leach took jobs out of the community. Appleton passed a boycott on their products. Do you think Oshkosh should pass a boycott?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, would you ever walk a picket line with striking workers?
I have.
You have done it. What would you do as an elected official?
Yes, I would.
Would do it as an elected official. Okay. A five-minute rule in the council, should that be maintained?
The five-minute community...
The five-minute citizen statements?
Oh.
Or would you, would you, should there be no five-minute rule?
Well, I think they should have the five-minute rule. I would actually, my, personally, in my own campaign, I would go much further than the five-minute rule and say that the city council should be going into the community soliciting opinion instead of waiting on a five-minute rule.
Um, currently, the council does not allow citizens to address agenda items in those citizen statements. Do you think citizens should be able to address agenda items?
Yes.
Okay. And what, what do you think is the major issue facing the city right now?
Open government.
What do you mean by that?
I mean that we're in a time and age where our taxes are going up, where we're spending millions of dollars on projects that maybe don't benefit us at this point, but they will down the line. Um, and I think that, let's, let's, let's take the amphitheater. Amphitheater is right on the edge of, of probably the most culturally diverse, economically diverse neighborhood in the city.
Okay.
Um, and there was no town hall meetings of any sort, asking that, that neighborhood how they feel about having an amphitheater put right on, you know, right on the edge of their homes.
Then we got time for one more question before we give the final statement.
Well, why do you think we should boycott Federal Signal products?
I don't, I don't think they were upfront with us about it. I mean, I really, I really feel that, that, I mean, they were, Federal Signal bought Leach a year before that. And within a year, they turn around and said, "We're moving everything north." And I, I think that, that, to me, that's, that's fishy. It's really fishy.
Well, what do you say to, you know, the CEO of every corporation's job is to maximize shareholder wealth. What do you say to the CEO, or why shouldn't the CEO be allowed to maximize shareholder wealth and take advantage of the best business opportunity out there?
My, I myself, I feel that what is, if, if we're, if we're waging the, the, the idea of what, of what best represents a CEO and its shareholders to a community, I'll go with the community any day. Um, and I, I believe that, that we have to strive to keep jobs in Oshkosh, working class jobs in Oshkosh. And I, I think that, that, that my, my best friend worked for them for 10 years, and is now unemployed because of this.
Bob, we got about a minute left. Look into camera three and tell the citizens of Oshkosh why they should vote for you in the February 15th primary.
Please go and vote for me in the February 15th primary. I am a social justice activist. I'm the director of the Winnebago Peace and Justice Center in Oshkosh. I have been a strong advocate for the working class and for the poor and impoverished of the city of Oshkosh. I have a strong community record of working for social justice and community justice. I am open to creating a more sustainable, open government in Oshkosh.
And how can people reach you if they want to?
Um, they can contact me at 203-6966, or they can email me at B-O-B-C-B-O-B, bobforcouncil@yahoo.com. Thank you.
Alright, Bob Peschel, thank you for being here. We're going to take a little break. When we get back, we're going to be joined by council candidate Mike Domke. Stay with us. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Better watch the mic.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in the forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write. Your dad? You speak your mind? Your dad?
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing. No money, no English.
America stood for freedom. It stands for freedom. And that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-4-A-CHILD. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to I on Oshkosh. I'm Tony Palmieri, sitting in for Cheryl Hens. Cheryl is not hosting today because we're talking about the common council, and she is running for the common council this year. Co-hosting with me is member of the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education, Ben Schneider II, a man who trembles when he just hears the word taxes. Is that right? Okay.
Not exactly.
We're now, we're now joined by Mike Domke, council candidate. And I have to say, Mike's wife is in labor. Um, so congratulations, Mike, and thank you so much for being here. A lot of people would be in the hospital right now.
Well, we'll just rush right over there afterwards.
Alright, we'll get through it quickly. Uh, Mike, we're going to ask you a series of yes or no questions. We'll give you a chance to give more depth. Uh, as you know, or first, actually, first, let's give you a chance to talk about why are you running for council?
I've just been observing the council's actions the last couple of years. The tax increases that we've come across this year, 5.7%. Um, I have some issues with the funding of private-public that is being done. Um, I just, I don't envision taxpayers' monies going to do these projects. We have so many other needs in our city.
Alright. Well, for example, the amphitheater project, do you support using any taxpayer dollars for the amphitheater project?
I think, um, we shouldn't have, we should have did some type of fundraising prior to going into funding that with taxpayer money.
So the answer is no.
No.
No. Okay. Did you support, if you had been on the council, would you have voted to waive the competitive bidding process for CR Meyer?
No.
No?
I would.
Uh, how come?
Um, I think we could have competitive bidding, and you can get a different price from different people and try to maximize your tax dollars that you are using since you are, went ahead with it.
Alright. Do you think the Pollock Pool should be closed?
Um, I guess, having seen the presentation that Mr. Stefani made, um, there was a lot of issues with the pool. I think if there would have been proper planning in prior years for maintenance of the pool, um, it would have never been an issue. But at this point, I guess I would have to say it was, I don't think it was really worth the money.
Okay. So you would support closing it then?
I would support closing it, and hopefully, there's a viable option out there someplace along the line.
Closing because of the condition of the pool and not investing more dollars in a deteriorated pool?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, you, you know, the restaurant smoking issue's been divisive. Do you support a ban on smoking in restaurants?
No.
Okay.
I think business owners should be able to choose where, what type of clientele they bring in, and if they want to have smoking there, they should be able to do that.
Okay. Should the mayor in Oshkosh, in your opinion, have veto power?
I think veto power would be a good thing for a mayor to have.
Okay. Uh, Federal Signal, as you know, took lots of jobs out of the community. The city of Appleton has passed a boycott on purchasing Federal Signal products. Should Oshkosh pass a similar ban?
I would have to say no. Um, it is sad that a lot of people, they lose their job, but I would like, you know, it goes right back to the competitive bidding. You can get a product for a better price, that's where you're going to have to go to keep the tax dollars down.
Okay. If, if, if a group of workers in Oshkosh went on strike, and you supported the strike, and you're on the Oshkosh Common Council, would you walk the picket line with those workers?
As an elected official?
As an elected official?
No. I wouldn't do that.
Okay. Uh, do you think the five-minute rule for citizen statements should be maintained?
I like the five-minute rule, yes, I would say I, it is. As long as there is the option, I've attended council meetings and stuff. They do waive it sometimes when somebody needs more time.
Give them more time.
If they request at the beginning.
Currently, as you know, citizens in the citizen statements cannot address agenda items. Do you think they should be able to address agenda items?
Um, I think, I think they should be able to, because we go out and, your citizens can't make any kind of comments on the, after the vote.
Okay.
And I think people should be able to say what they thought about the vote.
Alright. I'm going to ask you one more question, and I'm going to turn it over to Ben. What do you think is the major issue facing the city right now?
I think probably downtown redevelopment. Um, that's probably about the biggest issue for the city right now.
And you don't think that the money's been spent wisely down there?
I don't think so. I think, I think there's a lack of planning down there.
Okay. You've, you've referred to yourself as one of the cobblestoners. Is that correct?
Yeah, I referred myself as a cobblestoner.
Okay. Proud cobblestone.
Proud cobblestoner.
Okay. Ben?
You, a few minutes ago, you talked about during the question of the approval of the use of taxpayer dollars for the amphitheater, and you said there's many other needs that we should be taking care of. What are some of those other needs that we should shift those dollars towards?
I think we could shift money toward some more road construction. We've decreased the amounts of roads that we've repaired, utility, construction. Um, there's probably, I, I think to go along with the Pollock Pool type thing, I think there's some things that we can do that are for our parks and stuff like that, to improve them somewhat, to get the kids, it's something to do in this town. Um, I realize the Pollock Pool is only a summer thing, but there's issues like that.
Yeah, I actually think the condition of the roads help keep the dentist busy because it rattles some fillings loose. You know, we're trying to support our local economy, but, um, we obviously in December received a 5.7% levy increase on our tax bill. Do you think that's reasonable?
I jump back one thing about the roads. Took my wife down the road the other day so she'd go into labor. It almost worked, I think. Um, I, what was your question? I'm sorry about that.
The 5.7%, the 5.7% levy increase that the common council passed, do you think that's reasonable?
That's not reasonable at all.
And the overall, city of Oshkosh taxpayer received a tax bill increase of roughly 6%, 6.6% over last year's. Um, I assume since 5.7% wasn't reasonable, the 6.6 wouldn't be reasonable. What is a reasonable tax increase?
I would probably say if you wanted to go with a reasonable tax increase, probably 2%, maybe a year. I feel cost of living probably does that type of increases.
But Mike, it is, it is easy to say that the city spends too much money. Realistically though, where would you cut? Have you looked at that budget? And have you made any judgments as to, as to what you, other than not spending money in downtown?
Yeah.
Is there anything you would cut?
I think we need to look at, um, the city, um, government itself, and maybe bring somebody in to do an independent evaluation of city services and stuff like, how departments are run, and evaluate that, and maybe find some cost-cutting savings in there.
You mean, you think that there are literally like too many bureaucrats in City Hall?
Maybe too many, um, department heads, something like that. I shouldn't say department heads, but there's, it seems like we could spread out our resources a little bit and maybe find better ways of doing things.
Hmm. Okay, Ben?
The Pollock Pool issue, I've, kind of go back to this because that was such a major issue, and I know the, the school system, we, well, excuse me, I wasn't going to talk about the school system.
That's alright.
The school system closed South Park, South Park School in part because it was just too costly, and I know a lot of people feel, and some candidates I'm sure, sure going to talk about, that we should perhaps should build more splash pads or build more pools. Given the fact that Amros build a large family facility, do you think that's a reasonable use of tax dollars to build those types of community facilities?
To build like a water park? Um, as far as splash pads and stuff, I think maybe if we got one, that's enough. Um, a water park, I really don't think that's a wise use when you got that many in the area. And I know there's been some talk of the county wanting one, even in County Park, whether that'll ever happen or not, I don't know. But I think it'd be a wise thing to put a water park in.
Okay. Mike, there's a, an organization in Oshkosh that I'm sure you've heard of called Progress Oshkosh. And they say, they told Sean Fitzgerald, publisher of Lake Winnebago Bee-to-Bee, that they're bothered by a loosely organized negative influence that has made its way into newspaper letters to the editor and citizen comments at public meetings. An influence, they say, persuades idleness and often attacks city leaders for investing resources into Oshkosh's future. Do you agree with Progress Oshkosh?
Not at all.
I mean, I think that they're talking about people like you.
Yeah, I think they're talking about me for sure. I've made some comments at council meetings and stuff.
So how do you, how would you defend yourself against that?
I would have to say, um, I'm not totally against the downtown redevelopment or anything like that. I agree with some of their philosophies of making progress in downtown, but there's just a way and a time that you can do that.
Right.
When you're facing, I believe it was in last year, just over a million dollars in shared revenue cuts, you can't sit there and stick more money of the citizens' tax.
Several times, I've heard you directly criticize councilwoman Maddox for her comment about the butter burgers. What, what bothered you about that?
It really bothered me, and, um, I look at it, it's about $57 a year for the, the increase, where she was comparing butter burgers to our tax increase. And when you sit there, $57 a year could be a good portion of somebody's grocery bill for a week. Maybe Mrs. Maddox doesn't feel that impact, but I feel there's a lot of people in this community that do.
Uh, as Mr. Palmieri mentioned, Tony, excuse me, first name basis here. You seem to have a problem with some common council members. Do you feel, who do you feel is doing a good job on the council, and who do you feel should, should be sent a pink slip?
Well, I think we got our Fab Five and our other two, Paul Esslinger and Peschel seem to be at least questioning and looking for some kind of planning. The other five people just kind of seem to go along with what the Chamber of Commerce I, well, don't like this, front 'em out, but...
But the critique about the no voters is, we know what they're against, but what are they for? So you seem to identify, obviously, with Esslinger and Peschel. What are you for?
I'm for fair tax increases, um, being fair to all the citizens of Oshkosh, not just select groups, um, being able to give people something that everybody can use. I mean, you can build an amphitheater and sell tickets to go there, but these people that are already funding it with their $57 a year, um, are they going to have another $57 to go see it during the year? Um, we're talking about charging people a park? I don't think the majority of the citizens that are looking at this project realize the whole scenario that's going to follow through with this.
Alright. Mike, in our remaining time, why don't you look into that camera and tell the voters of Oshkosh why they should vote for Mike Domke on February 15th?
Well, you should vote for Mike Domke if you want to see a limit put on your tax increases, and you don't want to see the frivolous spending that's been going on by our common council at this time. Um, I just want to go out there and represent the common citizen of Oshkosh and be fair to everybody. And hopefully, through that time, we can go on with some progress here and improve the environment for the city and draw people to want to live here.
If people want to reach you, how can they do that?
They can reach me on my home telephone number, which is 232-5401. Otherwise, they can email me at domkeforcouncil, it's D-O-M-K-E-F-O-R-C-O-U-N-C-I-L at yahoo.com.
Alright. We want to thank Mike Domke for being here, especially while his wife is in labor. We certainly wish him the best. We're going to take another public service announcement. When we get back, Ben and I will interview common council candidate Andrew Corwitz. Stay with us. Stay with us.
Thank you.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in the forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write.
Your dad? You speak your mind? Your dad?
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing, no money, no English.
America stood for freedom, it stands for freedom, and that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to Eye on Oshkosh. Tony Palmieri here substituting for Cheryl Hints. She is running for the Oshkosh Common Council and we are interviewing council candidates, so she will not be hosting during this time. I am joined however by Ben Schneider II. You know him from the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education. We are now joined by council candidate Andrew Kowitz and we'll spend about 13 minutes with him. And we'll start off, Andrew, thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Sure. Why are you running for the Oshkosh Common Council?
Well, I'm running because there's been a lot of issues that's been raised up by the council in the past couple of years, mostly financial issues, I think have been really taken into haste and without a lot of consideration. One of the issues honestly that really caught my attention was in September when the council voted 5 to 2 to drop the requirement that groups holding events that have liquor sales on city property don't have to have liability insurance. And even though the city attorney advised against this. To me, that seems kind of absurd.
All right. Well, maybe we'll get to that issue a little bit later. Going to ask you a series of questions.
Okay.
As you know, there has been some taxpayer money used for the downtown Riverside Park Amphitheater project. Do you think taxpayer dollars should be used for a project like that?
I think this is something that should be privatized. Be better for the city if it's privatized, you know, private companies would have a better, you know, they'd have more control over it and that's what they're going to want anyway.
So if you had your way, there would have been no public, no public dollars in that project?
That is correct.
Actually, would you have voted to spend the $950,000 to buy the property that the amphitheater's on?
That would depend on the budget circumstances at that time. I mean, if, if we didn't have to draw money away from other works like public works or public safety, then that's something that could be considered. But we draw a lot of money from, away from other areas that I think need to be covered more.
Okay. The council, as you know, waived the competitive bidding process to give C.R. Meyer a contract for restrooms and concession stands. If you had been on the council, would you have voted to waive that bid?
I would have voted no. I think it's best to keep, you know, awareness of every possibility so you can assess the situation to its fullest consent, content. And then, you know, that's the job as a city councilman to look over every situation.
All right. If the Pollock Pool is going to stay open, it's going to cost money. Do you think the Pollock Pool should close?
I would hate to see it closed. I mean, I grew up here, I was born in Oshkosh. I remember going down to Pollock Pool a lot, you know, and swimming around there. It's been under maintained for a long time and it may cost more than necessary to keep it running.
So that's... So you would, you would close it?
I would probably vote, yeah, to close it.
Okay. Smoking in restaurants in Oshkosh, as you know, has been a divisive issue. If you were on the council, would you vote to ban smoking in restaurants?
My situation on this is, no, I would not. I personally, I do not like sitting in a smoking restaurant. I'm not a smoker, never have been. But I feel it's a businessman and woman's right to have what type of clientele they like in their restaurant.
All right. We are going to elect a mayor in Oshkosh for the first time in about 50 years, however that mayor will not have veto power. Do you think a mayor should have veto power?
I'd like to see a mayor with veto power. It makes the mayor position less ceremonial, gives it a little bit of influence.
The, the Federal Signal Company, formerly Leach, left Oshkosh. Appleton passed a boycott on Federal Signal products. Should Oshkosh pass a similar ban?
I think Oshkosh got hit really hard with the amount of layoffs that, that that company has been doing and I think we should at least consider it. And yeah, I think so.
So, okay, so yes. Let's say a group of workers went on strike and you support the strikers and you're a common council member, would you walk a picket line with strikers?
I would have to look at the whole situation and see what would best serve the city and then I'd make my decision off that.
So yes, if you felt it best served the city?
Yes.
Okay. We currently have a five-minute rule for citizens at the council meetings. Should that be maintained?
I found that's always been a good, back four or five years ago, I was an intern here at Channel 10 and we filmed. Five minutes has always been good, you know, some people tend to ramble and not, you know...
All right, so you like the five minutes?
Yes.
But currently in that five minutes, citizens cannot address agenda items. Would you, do you think that citizens should be able to address those agenda items?
I think they should. I mean, they vote for us to be on the council and they should have their say in the agenda items.
All right. And then one more question I'll ask before I turn it over to Ben.
Okay.
What do you think is the major issue facing this city right now?
I think the major issue facing this city is downtown development. It's been stagnant for years. When I was a kid, I remember we could go to Park Plaza and maybe buy something from the Orange Julius. There's not a lot down there and when something is open down there, it closes within six months. It's, it's sad to me, honestly.
All right, Ben.
Early on, when you opened, you said there's been a lot of financial issues taken in haste and you referred to the September 5-2 vote on the, dropping the insurance requirement for the water, water park, or the water, River Fest festivities. What other financial issues do you feel has been taken in haste that you disagree with, with the common council outcome?
Well, I think the amphitheater bidding process is a prime example and they wanted to speed it along and just eliminate bid and go with C.R. Meyer. And it's something I think we should have took more time with. We are spending a lot of money in this, so we should take the time and assess the situation to its fullest.
Okay.
Would you, would you vote as a member of the common council to continue spending money, taxpayer money on downtown development, on the amphitheater and extending the, those boundaries?
If we had an excess of money or a certain, you know, a certain amount, because you have to first build a base and that goes with, you know, public trust, a public interest, public safety. Once you build on that, you can start building a base to walk with and then you can start putting money into public spending and increasing revenue and downtown business.
Let me follow up on this, Ben. What, what in your opinion has the city council not been doing as regards downtown development? Because it looks to us like they've been spending quite a bit of money down there. So what have they not been doing?
They've been spending a lot of money down there, but it's been money on beautification. And, you know, the sundial in Opera House Square, in my opinion, looks really nice. I don't think anyone can argue about that. But what has that done for downtown business? No one's going down there to shop. When I go down by Opera House Square, only thing I see there is protesters when there's something to protest. There's no one lounging, no one really doing anything with it.
Okay.
If you remember the common council, right now we seem to have two factions. We have five, we have a 5-2 faction or separation. Who do you, what, what group do you best relate with? The five, the members that vote with the Fab Five or the two in the minority?
I see myself usually voting with, with the two in the minority. As I mentioned with the council voting the 5 to 2 on dropping the insurance liability, I, I just can't agree with that. I don't, I don't understand their reason with that.
Now, you're a very young guy. I think I read in the paper, you're 22?
Yeah.
All right. Now, how does a 22-year-old guy have any credibility to run for this office? What, what experience do you have that suits you to sit in this council?
Well, I've lived in Oshkosh for all my life, 22 years. I was born here, I have a deep interest in Oshkosh. My family lives here, I live here. I'm good at assessing situations. I look things out to the fullest, I look behind just what's on the front and take the situation as a whole.
But other candidates will say that they've been involved in more service activities in the city just because they're older than you are. What would you say? Why isn't their experience worth more than your life experience in the city?
I think their, their experience does offer a lot of, you know, contribution for them, but I think what I can offer is like where I lack in experience, I can bring up, you know, I have relations with people within the city, you know, I, I feel for them and I know what they like as councilmen. So I'm hoping I can be that for them.
Ben.
How do you feel about the Northwestern referring those that are in the, you know, that vote with the, in the minority on the common council? How do you feel about them, the reference that they're cobblestoners? Because you're actually indirectly a cobblestoner.
Yeah.
You see yourself that way.
I mean, I, I find it, it's interesting. Everyone's got the right to their own opinion and if that's the way they feel about that, then that's their right to feel that way, I suppose.
But do you think that there is a group in Oshkosh that is against progress? Are there people in Oshkosh that are against everything?
I don't think anyone's against progress. Everyone sees progress in their own way. Everyone has a way to get to their goal. Some people disagree and some people don't with, with certain ways. My way's just different than others, along with those other two people.
Okay. Ben, you're going to ask your question about the tax levy, whether, whether the 5.7%?
You like that one, huh?
I like that one, yeah.
It gets better each time.
I like that question.
Let me straighten my tie and... No, the, the, the common council or the, the city, actually, I'm not doing very good so far. The tax, city tax bill increased by 5.7%. Do you think that's a reasonable increase?
It's, it's a lot. It's reasonable with the way things are being spent. If things were spent more proper in my mind and more, more responsible, taxes wouldn't need to be increased that much. We're putting a lot of money into, you know, say the amphitheater. That really doesn't need to be there. That should be publicly funded and if we had that extra money...
Privately funded, you mean? That should be privately funded.
Yeah, privately funded. My apologies on that one, yes. And, you know, if we had that money, we could spend it on other things. We wouldn't need to raise taxes that much.
Like what other things?
Well, the streetlights. You know, not all the streetlights are on right now because we're putting funding into the amphitheater. That's absurd. I mean, this, you know, public safety, public work should always be first in my opinion. Because if you can't, you don't have a clean and running system, how can you branch out and do other things?
It's always easy to say that a governmental body spends a lot of money, but what would you cut? Are there any things in that budget right now that you think need to be slashed?
I think all the funding going into the amphitheater and other types, you know, things that should be privatized can definitely be cut back. And, you know, I'd have to look at the budget more, you know, throughout the year, see what's been done. But those are things I'd cut back on. And then I'd try to keep public activities, you know, well-funded, education well-funded. Because I feel those are very important.
Okay. Then you got one more question before we...
Well, when you say cut back, do you mean eliminate? Should we, should we put the brakes on spending money on the amphitheater and, and no longer use taxpayer dollars, general fund dollars and completely get the rest of those dollars to continue with the building of the surrounding areas through donations?
I would love to see it, yeah, privately funded. If, can we publicly cut it, like all together right now? That's hard to say. We're kind of in the process already. It may not be possible anymore. But I would like, I would have liked it not to even have that discussion in the first place, you know?
Andrew, we have a short time left. Why don't you look into camera three there and tell the citizens of Oshkosh why they should vote for you on February 15th?
All right. Should vote for me, Andrew Kowitz, on February 15th. Because what I'd like to do with the city is to increase, you know, the safety and the infrastructure. We're going to have to cut spending on frivolous activities such as amphitheater and make it more privatized so we can better build, build a better foundation for our city. And from the better foundation, we can grow and then continue on to better things.
If people want to reach you, how can they do that?
They can reach me at my home phone number, which is 230-3523, or my email address, which is akowitz@yahoo.com.
How do you spell Kowitz?
K-O-E-R-W-I-T-Z.
All right. We actually do have it up on the screen. We want to thank Andrew Kowitz for being here. We're going to break for another public service announcement. When we get back, Ben Schneider and I will talk about some city issues. Stay with us. Andrew, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in the forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write. Your dad? You speak your mind? Your dad?
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing, no money, no English.
America stood for freedom, it stands for freedom, and that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
All right. Welcome back to Eye on Oshkosh. I'm Tony Palmieri from the University of Wisconsin at Oshkosh. And we've just spent the first three quarters of our show talking with candidates Bob Peschel and Mike Domke and Andrew Kowitz. And now I'm going to talk with co-host Ben Schneider II about this council race, get some of his views on it. Ben, what do you think ought to be the key issue or two in this common council race?
Well, I, I think clearly what the, the issue will be, since everybody's fresh off their December surprise from the, from the local elected bodies and their 6.6% local city tax increase, or the overall tax increase from our, from our main bodies, it'll probably be spending and how we allocate those dollars. Clearly with the three candidates so far, the common theme is, you know, we want to support good government, we want to support wise spending, we want to support, you know, public works, et cetera, but we feel that some things are being shortchanged because of our commitment to certain projects.
So if you were on the common council, you would have been against the amphitheater project?
Yeah, I would not have used $950,000 of taxpayer money.
To even buy that land.
And flow to 25, 20, basically $950,000, we're paying that bond over 20 years, it's probably going to cost 1.3 million with interest.
But Ben, what would you do with that land? Would it just sit there vacant forever? What would you do?
I wouldn't have bought it. It's, it's, it was WPS land. The fact is, $950,000 was an absurd amount of money to pay. If you look at contaminated property, what, what can a private individual do with that property? What could, what could WPS do with that property? You can't put an apartment complex, I believe.
Right, right.
So to spend $950,000, I, I bet you that property was worth 75% of that. You know, and maybe some appraiser said a million dollars, but there wouldn't be a lot of people knocking on the door to buy that.
So you think the city just got a bad deal on it? You weren't opposed to buying the land, just not for $950,000?
I, I would, as an elected official, I have a higher standard for other people's money than I do for my own. I would not have taken my own personal money and invested in that property.
But at the time that was done, Ben, in fairness to the people that voted for that, they claim that this is long-range thinking. That they, I remember at the time, they were saying this is equivalent to 100 years ago buying the land that became a Menominee Park, which I think it's a good thing that we have Menominee Park. And their argument is in 100 years, people will look back and see that what we're doing now with Riverside Park is good money spent. You don't think so?
Well, actually, no, I actually think, yeah, Menominee Park's a good facility, but, or a good park, but we need to clean up the geese first. But that's another issue. Because I can't even take my kids to Menominee Park unless they're wearing a, a bodysuit because I'm afraid that they're going to have tutsi rolls stuck to the bottom of their feet. I'm afraid that they're gonna have tutsi rolls stuck to the bottom of their feet. But I look at the CP Avenue property and on the school board, if we're going to spend $950,000, we gotta do what's called a referendum and we need to ask the community, "Are you going to support this?" And what I would have supported in the common council, if they had a lot of support, is let's ask, let's ask the taxpayers in a referendum question, "Do you support spending $950,000 to buy, what is it, six acres of contaminated property for $950,000?", you know?
But the taxpayers are gonna say no.
So, my point exactly, and actually, that's another point I'd like to bring up.
Sure.
How common is this common council? Should we call them the uncommon council? I mean, how common is it? If the taxpayers, if you believe they're gonna, if they're going to say no, why wouldn't the will of the people prevail?
Just to play devil's advocate, isn't, isn't that leadership? Leadership, one definition. No one's gonna vote to raise their taxes, we know that. So doesn't...
No, no, actually, five members of the common council voted to raise their taxes.
No, I mean, no citizen is gonna vote in a referendum to say, "Raise my taxes."
Well, at least five would because presumably those five members of the common council would vote.
But they would argue, I think, that they're showing leadership in doing this, that they're thinking long, you just don't think this is long-term thinking. You don't think ultimately this is gonna help the city.
Well, of course it's gonna help the city, it's an investment, but the question is, should we be taking taxpayers' dollars to further that cause? I think back, and I'm not the best history, student of history, but I believe the federal income tax was instituted to pay for the rising cost of civil war and now the highest marginal tax rate, federal rate, is up to 36%. It was repealed from 39.6 down to 36. Look at how far we've come in taxation where we're taxing for something that is almost a superfund site, nine, you know, $950,000. And given the, given the choice, I don't think the community would have supported that clearly. And I go back to the 2000, the failed November 2001 referendum in which the community voted down in part a $12.6 million referendum, in part to build a $5.7 million school on Sunset, on Riff Road, Sunset property.
Right.
And I think if the community, rightly so because of decline in enrollment, would vote down, excuse me, vote down a new school, why would they support a million-dollar piece of parcel of land which actually have cost several million dollars now and that's just the tip of the iceberg? I believe the city's in discussions or soon will be to buy that law office, law office, that Refbavir Law Office.
So it sounds, it sounds like you believe that anybody who voted for that purchase should not be returned to office.
I wouldn't support those folks.
For, just from that vote alone, for buying that property?
Well, of course, you have to look at the field of candidates and you have to weigh the best, but between a slice of moldy bread and a slice of soggy bread, that might be the choice we have, but certainly it doesn't reflect my priorities and it...
All right, so they did buy the property, we know that. They did start building, we got the donation of the ban shell. No one's against the donation of the ban shell.
Well, that's phenomenal. That's great.
Right, and then we somehow voted to waive a competitive bidding process. What did you feel about that for C.R. Meyer?
Well, it's really interesting. The last common council meeting, Mr. Esslinger asked for some schematics and I believe he's talking with the local contractor to find out after the fact if we could get a better bang for a buck. And we're, we find from Mr. Esslinger's probing questions that there wasn't a, I believe, a plan to actually bid on. It's almost like a conceptual bid and that should really make us alarm and it just blows my mind on how the Northwestern can, can compliment the common council for that. Heck, I think, I probably spend more time shopping my car insurance than they do spend, than they actually spent shopping their bathroom.
Can you ever imagine a scenario where a competitive bidding process should be waived in city government?
Um...
I personally find it extremely, to me, it would have to be an emergency situation.
Well, that and, and speaking from the elected body that I'm at, I would see if the dollar amount is counterproductive where we're gonna have, you know, if we're talking about, you know, bidding out reams of paper, I really think, it's certainly good that we're supporting a very strong local employer in C.R. Meyer and we should, and I thank them for their leadership on this, but I think it's, it's just far too easy for elected bodies to spend other people's money.
Now, you did mention the Oshkosh Northwestern and Mr. Rickman, the executive editor, has lambasted as cobblestoners. You mentioned that in our interviews, those people who are, you know, especially against this Riverside Park project, but people who he's framing as against, they were against the library referendum 10 years ago and so on and so forth. Do you call yourself a cobblestoner?
Well, what is a cobblestoner?
According to Stu, it's anyone who's against these projects.
See, I don't think because you're concerned about your taxes that you're, you're a cobblestoner. I don't know what that means. What I am personally is someone that has a higher standard for other people's money. I don't vote for frivolous spending. I don't support 9.1% levy increases. I wouldn't support a 5.7% levy increase.
But again, I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked the candidates.
Sure. Am I, am I running for something here?
Yeah, right. We gotta make sure we tone you down here, Ben. We know, we know the easiest thing in the, and we're not gonna talk about school board here, the easiest thing in the world is to say that government spends too much money. So if you're on the Oshkosh Common Council, other than not spend for these downtown projects, what would you cut?
Actually...
Don't you accept that the city is already cut to the bone?
No. Actually, one thing I haven't heard and I, and I see this, and I'm gonna, I will reference the school board. Our budget went up over $3 million and what you have to do is restrict spending. You have to restrict the rate of spending. If you look at the city budget, which I did in preparation for the show, the largest growth areas on the budget was planning and zoning, rightly so, police, fire department.
So we should lay off police and fire?
No, actually, I, I didn't finish, Tony. Come on, give me a chance.
I want, I want some of you guys that don't like to spend money to finally come out and say, "What are you gonna cut? Who are you gonna fire?"
Okay, well, you don't necessarily have to cut something, you just don't spend it to begin with. We would not have had to raise, the common council would not have had to raise taxes 5.7% if they wouldn't have spent $950,000 to buy that property, to spend the money on the schematics, I believe it was $125,000 for the consultation, there's 1.2 million dollars. The, the, the common council has a, what, $57 million budget? You start adding the million and $2 million up there, all of a sudden you're down to a 1% levy increase, 2% levy increase, because after all, we have to support our staff, you have to settle contracts. So you don't necessarily have to cut something, you just don't spend it to begin with.
Well, then how does that handle things like the healthcare increases? Isn't a tremendous amount of this budget in personnel costs?
Yeah, well, I know on our body, it's 85% of the budget, 85% of the budget salary and benefits, but again, you don't necessarily have to cut something, you just don't have to spend it to begin with. I know, for example, the school system last year, we spent $350,000 in part to buy LCD flat-screen monitors for elementary school students. I don't have an LCD flat-screen monitor at my house, that's $350,000 that we didn't have to spend and that could have been used to help alleviate the 9.1% levy increase. So for someone to say, "Where would you cut?", I'd say, "I wouldn't spend it to begin with."
So you think that this common council needs to spend more time deciding what not to spend?
I think the common council needs to spend more time on figuring out where the priorities of this community are and support those priorities so people don't lose their feelings when they're driving over certain roads. And I think we can do that. We have to support police, fire, public works, water filtration, those are core services.
But isn't it true, Ben, that his, now you're from Oshkosh, I'm not, so you have a lot better idea of this than I do. Isn't it true that historically, the same people who today would be against the amphitheater and against other spending projects like that, downtown spending, would in the past have been against spending for streets? I mean, hasn't the idea been that Oshkosh has these bad streets because people have not wanted to spend the money to fix them?
I, I don't, I don't think that, I think...
We have the petitioning process. Isn't it true that most people would rather not petition to get their street fixed?
Well, I'm not as well-versed as a, as a history of, of, you know, the Burnwood Expansion, you know, or the, or the Jackson Street expansion. My, my focus locally has been on other, other entities and, but the fact is, two lanes isn't good after a certain number of years and you gotta expand it to four lanes. In terms of, I just think we need to have a focus on where our priorities are and it's good that these candidates, it's starting to come out right now. It seems like the common, the common theme is taxes and priorities and, you know, it should be private, private dollars or public and I think everybody complements the foundation that donated that money for the amphitheater. And I don't think anybody's against downtown development. I'm certainly for downtown development. It's, it's how do we achieve that, how do we, what's the means of achieve that end?
Right. Well, I want to ask you in our last minute about that smoking referendum. I think that's gonna be a big issue in this race before this is all said and done. What's your view on that?
Well, I'm a, I'm a small business owner and I, I deal with, I embrace a lot of mandates because it makes me more accountable to what I do and I really think, I think it's going to be a very, it's gonna be a major issue. And I also personally, I didn't support it. I did support the mayor issue because I think the community needs to have more, more, more voice, but...